All right, 6:30, we'll start the meeting.
Reporting in progress.
Okay, do we have any need for executive session this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we might want to have a discussion of the Wesco DBA Champlain Farms liquor license renewal permit application situation in executive session if you'd like, and I think Chair, Vice Chair Mills has a matter.
Yep, I have a personnel matter, Town Manager.
Should the Wesco go under the liquor board?
Yeah.
Because you're going to come out and go into liquor board according to agenda.
We'll have the executive session in the liquor board.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If the Chief is willing to stick around, it could be a little bit of time, or I could paraphrase what you've told me.
No, I'll stay.
I'm just reluctant to hear about this in open session.
No, I agree. I'll sit down and talk to the board.
All right, thanks.
Make liquor board our last thing on the agenda, too. Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, it already is.
Shut up.
All right, is that it for executive?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for those two items.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know.
Number.
What?
Oh, okay. And we do need, we do have a need to amend the agenda this evening extensively.
You're going to regret asking that because I've got a list of five things.
Aye, aye, aye.
Under old business, I believe Chief Warfel is willing and able to give us a quick update on the police cruiser purchase. Under new business, we have a highway access right-of-way permit application. We have a request from the school district for select board input on their budget revote plans. We've got a fire department request for authorization to conduct a coin drop. And under the liquor board, we have a new second-class liquor license renewal permit from Sugarwood DBA Kamuta's Market.
Make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything, any corrections or anything on the meeting minutes of February 28th and March 2nd?
And I'll send you also down the liquor board minutes of March 2nd. That's to be added, three things for you, Joe.
Anybody have any questions on the orders?
I see they look like they had to put a new radiator on the Greater 2200. That must have been a complete, the whole thing, I would think at that money.
Well, you obviously haven't had a radiator.
Yeah, boy, radiator to repair.
Well, let's probably record it. Yeah.
I can give you a little summary from the repair bill if you'd like. Arthur's auto.
Yes.
Yes.
Handwritten bracket materials and the hardware, a recor radiator, that was $2,140 to recor the radiator. Six hours extra labor to R and R, steam clean, the D cooler. Remove something bracket and extract broken bolts, rebuild the bottom bracket and weld it back to the side bracket. The old bracket was rusted out.
Sounds about normal.
It makes sense.
What year is that grader?
Oh, gosh.
I don't know.
Back in the eighties, isn't it?
Yeah.
We keep talking about a replacement.
They wanted a new one. They've wanted a new one for the last 15 years.
So a $2,200 radiator is pretty cheap if you're doing a grader.
We wait for it, I don't know just how many hours a year they put on it. It's not a whole lot.
I think we price.
Wait for Killington's, right?
We always ask them about how their graders are doing, and sometimes we've had a proposal. Last time we said, no, thanks.
Yeah.
So I don't know. We keep letting them know that we're interested. Of course, a brand spanking new one is 350 to 400.
Oh, anyway.
Oh, yeah. Probably close to half.
So we keep putting money into it.
Right now, yeah, if you could get one.
Oh, yeah.
Did we have to replace the door here on the town office?
No, it's wastewater.
4700.
Yep. That, I believe, is a wastewater office door or chemical room door.
Well, if it's chemical room, it's probably a secure.
Any other questions?
Here they are.
The Depot Hill Bridge repairs, was that the covered bridge?
That's the covered bridge repairs. They did it.
Was there insurance that?
There was. We got about $10,000, $11,000 of insurance after our deductible. They had estimated $12,000, and the folks that came and did the repairs did it in a day. And so rather than the three days they planned on, it looks like we had a bargain. They offered to do, to replace what the highway crew had done to one piece years ago, but that seems to be holding up well, so we didn't see any purpose in that. There you go, Joe, if you'd like.
You drive through there a lot, right? How does it look? I haven't driven through there since it got repaired.
I've been through it since I got fixed.
You just see some white pieces of wood in there.
Oh.
Hey, Barb. Come on in, have a seat.
Don't age up at some point, right? That won't take too long.
Long time no see. Maybe next month, right? In person, maybe?
Town Manager's report?
Yes, thank you, Alicia. It'll be a brief one.
Yep, no problem.
The town's new assessor clerk position was advertised for about a month with one application having been submitted by the February 28th deadline. The good news is that it's someone that Lisa Wright has worked with, kind of in that role in a couple of other towns. But Lisa and I discussed it, and we decided we should advertise it for one more month, thanking this applicant and assuring them that we would interview them when we are ready to do so. We've learned that the Pittsburgh Fire Department and the Historical Society will be resuming their Memorial Day traditional parade and reception after having missed out the last two years due to COVID. So congratulations, and that's an exciting sign of things returning to normalcy. The Pittsburgh First Response went out to bid on new siding and windows for their building, which is definitely showing its wear. And I look forward to presenting that along with the First Response folks to you at the April 6th meeting. Those just came in. And the Town Manager will be away from Thursday, March 24th through Thursday, March 31st. Therefore, it's possible the packets for the April 6th meeting won't arrive until Monday, April 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any select board member remarks? Nothing? Any public comment? Everybody's on the agenda? Who's on, I can't, is that Mr. Ben Hamer?
I think so.
Picture, yeah, I don't know who the other one is.
Okay.
Helen is on the phone.
Helen's on the phone.
Okay. All right, let's, we'll skip to new business, because a lot of people in the room are on new business. Okay. Lori and Donna, if you want to start with the updates on the Pittsburgh Village Farm grant.
I am so happy to bring you the most exquisitely good news. So if you were feeling as if this is a dreary day, which it wasn't, this would be good news. So I think John's passed around a copy of a PowerPoint that we delivered to a group of prospective donors to the Pittsburgh Village Farm, other funding organizations in the state. Because our major challenge at the Pittsburgh Village Farm continues to be funding sources so that we can work on the house, as you all well know. Just this week, we received incredibly good news that we were the recipient of a $400,000 grant from the Sanders money that was announced last spring. Donna will speak to that. She's our heroine here because she writes these grants. And she'll tell you a little bit more about some of the others we're working for, but, so we got that $400,000, and we got another $50,000 grant from Let's Grow Kids in the interest of the Early Childhood Education Center that we are looking to put at the core of our community center. So this is going to allow us to move further towards what the town had hoped for, which was a community center, as those of you who may have attended some of those early meetings three years ago, when the town brainstormed what they would like to have happen with that building and the property that it sits on. So we couldn't be more delighted. Now we're in the process of figuring out how to distribute that money. And in sum, we may have the half a million, $500,000 that will be spent so fast that we're going to catch our breath over it because there's all the permitting and state mandates and things of that sort that we're going to have to move through. Environmental reviews and archaeological studies and historical studies, and you all know there's a lot of bureaucracy involved. But we'll move through that, cover that. The All Funders Group that we met with on Friday a couple of weeks ago indicated tremendous support for what we're doing. The Child Care Center is going to address a critical state need still. There is about 8,700 children that are still unable to find placements in care centers. And what we've learned is that if you have a housing component to a grant you're looking for and an early childhood component, then your grants are much more likely to be accepted. But for us, and for us, those are critical components. We want people in Rutland County to have access to the childcare they need so more people can, women especially, can get back to work, all of that. We're happy to make that a part of our program, and it moves us closer to being able to get the funding. Once you have big funds like that, other funders will jump on because they now see that we're serious about what we're going to do and that there's an interest in us doing it. So we expect other funds to come in as we go forward. Yeah, I just, I can't be more excited about having something happen on site so that people in town, in addition to all the events that I think a lot of you know about already and that were mentioned in your PowerPoint packet, we need to put some things in process so that people can see that we're really moving ahead here. So we hope we see a lot of you at some of the upcoming events, and I hope you share our enthusiasm for what's about to happen up there. It's really exciting. So that said, we need some help from you tonight on the planning grant. But Donna, who's again been the point person for writing a lot of these grants, is going to share with you what we'll need tonight and a little update on how the proposals changed a little bit in response to our getting the $400,000 and the $50,000.
Okay, so three times is a charm, they say, so this is our third time going for this planning grant. But I do have to say that the first time, there was lack of money. The second time, it was Governor had said, look, if any applications come in without a housing component to it, you're going to have to nix them. So this time, we've talked to them again, and they're saying that it looks really favorable. But the best thing to come out of this was that I had all the files. We worked real, we put so many hours into this. This is a $60,000 state planning grant. We had all the files, so when the appropriations bill or grant came up, Sanders, we, I just put it together. I mean, I had surveys done and all this other stuff, and then we get that one. And so it was just amazing.
There's a lot of cutting and pasting that we now can do. We've applied for so many things.
So, you know, all that work has really paid off, you know.
Nice.
So that was nice that we had that in place. So basically, tonight, we're asking again for your support. John would be getting on to the Gears program to submit that application. And the changes in that application really came about with, we had a business plan done in December, and they talked about having, we will have some office space, but we will have an apartment component to that also, so to have some housing there. And I mean, the business plan really showed the feasibility for doing this and some of the other projects that we're working on.
And am I right that, once again, for this program, it needs to be the town that is the official applicant, even though it's your project and you'd run with it?
Right, right.
Yeah, I really think you are pivotal in this because the grantors want to know that the full town is behind any initiative that they put money into, which only makes sense. So we appreciate your support.
Yeah, definitely.
We will not be here fourth time on this.
No, it's taken us four years, four years to get this far, really. I mean, and then, like Lori said, once you gain some momentum, then everybody knows, you know, it's okay, they can trust you, that they can get in the game, you know, and put out money for you. But I, you know, I will just go through that last summer, we did partner with the Rec Department and McClure Library, and we had the summer program for the kids, had that community garden. I mean, that was just such a really nice collaborative for those, for the children in town. This year, we're going to plan a pavilion. That's another grant we've got going on. We have to take advantage of everything that we can get, you know, so for this project. So that pavilion will be really handy because people go down there and utilize the grounds. But if the weather's bad, you're putting up tents and taking them down, and the pavilion would be really good.
Good place for your musical acts to perform.
Yes, there's only advantages. We've got a prospective board member who's really interested in, she's a farmer, so she's interested in the farm-to-table harvest suppers. If we had a pavilion, you could have potluck suppers out there with, you know, people gathering. But so far we've.
Get back to farmers market some.
All that, who knows?
Yeah, that would be really nice.
Yeah, was that successful when it happened here?
Somewhat, and then it was kind of petered out.
Yeah.
It was.
Well, we'll see. Yeah, so the thing is, you know, what's so exciting about this moment is that we've been able to use the land effectively. This Better Places Grant for the pavilion is going to be fantastic, but we've got that house sitting there, you know. Finally, we're going to be able to move along. It's one of the challenges that we have there is that, as you all know, the cost of construction materials has gone sky high. So where we once thought it was going to be about 1.2 that we needed, right now, you know, there's a bigger chunk there. But we hope those prices will start to come down as the supply chains ease off a little.
Maybe somebody could go online at the This Old House website.
I know.
I know, you're right. That would be neat.
Well, we've been surprised that the historic preservation people haven't jumped on some funding. But again, what we learned at this All Funders meeting is that something in the higher echelons of the state puts out mandates that money can only be for proposals that have da-da-da-da-da, whatever the current need is. And we can't argue with that, you know, we have, so we get that. So Historic Preservation is also looking at projects that somehow meet those needs. But the good news is that childcare is one of those needs. So that's what really got us the Sanders money. So we expect Bernie to come down and be in town this summer. He wants to come by and see where he's put his money.
Oh, I'm sure he will.
We'll let you know. So, John, I don't know, the signatures will be something you go ahead and manage now at this point.
If, I think you probably would want some kind of a motion.
Yeah.
From the board agreeing to once again sign an application for the grant.
Yes, perfect.
And then the members would sign it, and we can get you the minutes in a future time if you need them.
Thank you very much for your support.
I'll go ahead and make a motion if we accept that, and the town backs it and signs the application for you.
You should dust off all your ribbon-cutting clothes.
All right.
At some point, we're going to be putting a shovel in the ground, and you should be there.
A large pair of scissors. Did you get a vote on that motion?
Motion and second, no vote yet. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All righty.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, bro.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it's going to happen.
Good, glad to hear it.
We only need a million more.
There you go.
But like you say, once people realize you're legit.
Yeah, yeah, it's really true.
And you're persistent, eventually they'll just give you the money because they're six dollars away.
How we going to get rid of these people? Give them money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
See you later.
All right, and consider cooperating with state on stormwater management study.
Barbara Noise Pulling is here to talk about that.
Right. Because the state DEC contacted John about this opportunity to be part of this bundle of stormwater master plans that will be done in the coming year for eight municipalities around the state. And there's three in this area. There's no role here for the Regional Planning Commission or for Nancy McGuire. You would be working directly with whoever the state hires as a consultant to do all eight of these plans. And they, they're designed to go out and look to see what problems are out there for stormwater and runoff, what potential problems are there, and then to come up with a prioritized list of projects. And that's the most valuable thing because that can go into the state database, and then that's much more eligible for other state funding. And I don't know if Addison County's been down here yet talking about the Clean Water Service Provider. Because you're in Otter Creek, they will be that, and that's a ton of money that's coming for the, down from the state to deal with Lake Champlain and Lake Memphamagod cleanup. A ton of money, I mean, we're talking at least a half a million to a million dollars a year for projects in each watershed. And that would just be Otter Creek. The Regional Planning Commission of Rutland's doing South Lake Champlain as that provider. So, long story short, there, being on, having a list of priority projects will help out there, too. Be able to get in the queue for the Clean Water Service.
The study itself has no cost to the town. We just cooperate and provide any information we might have to help them put together their assessment.
Yeah, right now, they're just looking for a letter of commitment from Pittsburgh.
Sounds like a win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to know those kinds of things.
Yeah, it is. We dump a lot of water into.
I mean, of course, we dealt with Barbara recently because she was the one who put the new system in place behind the firehouse.
Yeah, we dealt with that, too. But yeah, it is, it is a good thing. They should be consulting with the town, holding meetings with you and other groups around town as well. The consultant should be doing that. The RFP is about ready to go out, so they're just waiting on the letters of commitment. And I think they have most of them. There was this, just, we didn't know who was in charge of this.
Right.
It took a while to figure out.
And you're here because the people who might be in charge are maybe not available this week, but we want to move forward.
Yeah.
So if you're.
Need a vote, or is that just a consensus?
I think we should probably get another motion in case it comes up.
I'll make the motion this time.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I'll second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And this is just for Alicia's signature? Thank you very much. Did you want to give us any updates on the other project? I think, did you say that or?
Yeah, so there was another block of money that we used to put in the stormwater. We retrofitted the little pond behind the fire station and the town garage so that it would collect more stormwater and nutrients, filter them out before it goes into Sugarwood Stream. So that, there, that got done late in the season, but it got done last year despite COVID and all the other challenges out there. And then recently, in the spring rains and the melt, it was discovered that it probably doesn't have, it's not attached enough to the bottom. And so the engineer has been tasked with, you know, what went wrong, and they think it just needs some, not just, I don't have a dollar figure yet, but more ballast, cement pads, maybe even straps connected to cement to kind of hold down the parts.
The horizontal pipe that is attached to a catch basin type thing.
Right.
So what, floated?
Yeah, the pipe kind of came up. It was above the water.
Yeah, and even the little, the container that takes the water came, popped up. It was like, yeah.
Was it plastic?
No, it's a, isn't it metal?
Neoprene, I think.
Yeah, it's.
Oh, so, well, it's a, okay, so, yeah, it's not concrete or anything?
No, no. So, yeah, they're thinking of maybe filling the bottom with like six inches of concrete.
Okay.
That thing, so it doesn't.
Give it some weight.
Yeah, doesn't go buoyant again.
Yeah, it's a little above the water.
Right.
Oops.
Yeah, it didn't work too good.
So, yeah, we're working through that, what's the best solution, and, you know, whether we go back to the, we go to the state to see who funds the repairs. We'll probably use the same construction company, which is Masterson, excavation, either Bristol.
This, this sounds to me like it's going to need maintenance of some kind on a regular basis.
Well, it is, yep.
We've got a maintenance agreement in place, but this was so early on in the process, we figured that's something that the people.
Design flaw.
Right.
Yeah, the town should not, this should not fall under that operations and maintenance.
Collects a lot of leaves.
Yeah, collects a lot of leaves.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I saw them clearing out in the fall, they're cleaning out.
Because I'm just kind of suspicious.
All the leaves floating in there.
Yeah, we get a lot of leaves down by that firehouse.
The town.
No, it's in the firehouse.
The town did sign off, it was sometime in 2020, on this operations and maintenance agreement for this, this project. And, you know, we were thinking that that would entail probably at least seasonal, you know, checks there. Bringing a back truck up and cleaning out that container, you know, the stuff that it collected. And, and checking the plantings, but the plantings have not gone in yet because this, this happened so late in the season last year.
Has there been any cost estimates that go with this maintenance? And if so, who would be responsible for taking care of the expense that might come from maintenance? Does this fall on the town, any particular department, or the state, or?
Chad's been involved, and he's aware that it'll be the highway crew that will have the requirement to occasionally visit and as she says, clean out this, the unit with their vac. They do have a vac system.
I would kind of, I'm quite. I would kind of, I'm quite suspicious that there will be a periodic maintenance program that will have to be performed. And that's why I wondered whether this has been addressed in the planning of it and the design of it and the operations of it and, and who's responsible and what the cost might be.
Yeah, yeah.
Any of that been figured out or is that?
We discussed it.
Joe, we figured that out when we decided to do it.
We did that, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, we saw that, we saw the plans and we're.
I can pull those minutes from the meeting if you'd like.
It was gonna be the town crew that did it, so it really wasn't a lot of expense, you know, it's a little time. Question answer, yeah.
One eleven twenty twenty.
Yeah, I remember it.
Yeah, I remember discussing it because that was a concern of all of us.
Whenever you build something or buy something, there is.
Well, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's becoming more and more of a part of, of the state money. That there be this separate operations and maintenance agreement and work done. Um, in some cases, twenty to thirty years ongoing. That would be really important to this clean water service provider money. That's a lot of money that the state is giving out.
We're, we're just kind of getting started on water quality regulations and controls and so forth. I'm a little bit familiar of it, about it in the, in the, uh, process of harvesting timber and stuff. There's certain things that are either rules that are in place now or coming. Uh, I don't think we've seen only just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to primaries. Everybody.
Yeah, and the clean water service provider program is interesting because it's a big decentralization that DEC is doing, the state is doing. It's giving up a lot of control, uh, along with this money. And it has a lot of strings attached to it. But it's, it's, it's a first for mine, it's a first for a lot of places. And, uh, we're feeling our way through that and they're gonna be keeping a close eye. But it is a great opportunity for towns in the Lake Champlain basins.
Right.
Get projects done. Do you want me to ask Addison County to come by for a visit sometime?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Who would?
That would be good.
Okay.
We could probably learn from her.
We'll tell them that we want some of that Barbara Noyes money. You know what I got about.
We'll just tell them she, she didn't, I earned a million dollars. It was just Barbara promised us a million if we listened to you, so.
There's scale. Yeah, it'll be, uh, it'll be interesting, there's, um.
So is it, is the committee up and running yet?
No, no, it's just, oh, boy, it's just taking forever just for the state to get its guidance written.
Oh.
It got the rule done early this year, it's just taking forever.
I know Ed was hinting around who he was gonna offer.
Ah, I know, I remember it happening, this conversation.
But, yeah, so, so that's Lake Cham, that's South Lake Champlain.
No, 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 north, north.
Yeah, so.
Because you guys get a representative on that one too.
Yeah, so I think they went with, um, I'm gonna be sitting on that one and I think they went with, um, a, a representative from the Danby Planning Commission, Hilda Haynes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's Addison County RPC, who's in charge.
Yeah.
You know, they were asking around, I think they sent some emails out about it.
I wouldn't be surprised. You get kind of a blurry vision after you look at all, enough of those emails.
Right.
But please, by all means, let them know that we're happy to have them talk to us.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Nothing like this face-to-face.
Yeah.
Lot better, yeah, a lot better.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure. Any water quality questions, you know where I am.
Right.
Except for Otter Creek.
Yeah.
Have a good night. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, take care.
Bye-bye.
Alright, consider filling vacancy on the rec committee.
Uh, yes, um, we had two very strong applications of, to fill the spot left behind by Robin Light, I believe. And the rec committee, along with Jen Pop, have suggested the name of Linda Drummond to serve. She, of course, had kids in the various rec programs for many, many years and has shown a real strong interest and, um, that's the recommendation.
Alright.
I will make a motion to appoint Linda to the rec committee.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright.
That's great, thanks.
She'll be great. Alright, we have a right-of-way permit?
Uh, yes, um.
Did see that.
Christopher Bistany, um, is interested in getting a right-of-way access permit. He, um, has submitted the permit. Chad has visited the site and, um, approved it. Um, he points out that the driveway, uh, is or will be sloped away from the road, a fifteen-inch culvert to be installed and removal of trees for visibility. The property is off of Furnace Road, uh, in, um, right off, uh, which is parallel to Barnard Road out there in the eastern part of the town. And there are, again, maps associated with the application.
I'll make the motion, we approve it, we'll hand it. It's all, it's Chad's recommendations.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll pass it down if you'll sign on the left-hand side there.
This one, the ones where we have to watch which side we sign up?
You decline on one side and say okay on the other.
Yeah.
So, is this a new house?
Good question, I don't know.
I can't see, this is.
New driveway.
Not familiar with the name.
Whereabouts out there on the Furnace Road is that?
They said near the Barnard.
Really close to the Chittingon Line.
Yes, close to the line.
Yeah, real close to the line.
Let's see if I can find it. Here you go, Joe.
It's across from Rob Ketchum's house. Not across, you know what I mean?
Right.
Furnace and Mrs. Barnard.
Okay.
It's way out there. That's where you used to have your friend who called the square dances. Isn't that the?
Oh, door, yep.
Door, the door place.
He's near, he's on a burning road.
Right, right, but in the general neighborhood.
It's not, wouldn't be a new house then?
No, I don't think it's a new.
Okay, alright, I just wonder. Unless it was really new, because I, I walk that a lot in this, four months. I've been up there all winter.
Maybe putting the driveway in before they built the house.
Well, it could be. Could be.
I'll tell you, if there's a house there, there's already a driveway.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, but that one driveway is really, really a bad place to come out.
Oh, yeah.
On that, on that curve there, that's a bit of a bad place coming out right there at the Chittingon-Pittsburgh line. I don't know whether that's what they're talking about, I don't.
Hmm. Fur Department coin drop.
Yes, um, Chief Hooker, would you like to talk about that?
All I can say is that they, they had a fundraising committee meeting and that's what they wanted to do. Case around another haunted house or.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're gonna do a car wash along with the coin drop.
And this would be Saturday, the twenty-eighth of May from eight to three?
Yep.
I make a motion that we approve the fire department's coin drop.
I'll second, oh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Memorial Day weekend?
It is, it's Saturday.
Saturday before.
And I will, uh, ask them for a form, who, who's the contact there, Jason? I'll ask him to get the form together for Chief Warful's signature.
So is it gonna, I'm assuming the coin drop will be in front of Lothrop and then you'll do the, do the car wash?
At the firehouse, yeah.
Oh.
Fire wash will be at the firehouse. It's gonna be a drive-through.
Yeah, alright, yeah?
Drive-through the station, yeah, yeah, going one door and on another. Two lanes.
That'd be cool.
We did that before, it works out great.
Didn't you do that for, uh?
Yeah, we did that for Eddie Keith's fundraiser.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you drive inside.
That's awesome.
You do four cars at a time.
Yeah.
Works out good.
Alright.
It's gonna be, I guess, by, uh, donation, you know.
Cool.
Cool.
Though I do hope also that's in addition to the haunted house.
Yeah. In addition, that's what we're hoping, in addition.
Yeah, get it caught back up.
Yeah.
We're hoping.
Alright, school board ballot.
Uh, yes, um, Helen, I think, received a letter, uh, from the, uh, school district, which is now planning the revote on their budget, which of course failed at town meeting. Um, they have asked for select board input from all the member towns. And the first question is, is the select board of this town agreeable to a mail ballot? The second question is, are there any dates or times that they should avoid when planning their informational hearing prior to a budget vote?
Yeah, first and third Wednesday of the month?
I agree, that's what I'm gonna suggest.
Exactly.
They're, they're meeting tonight to talk about it and I figure if they wanted the select boards to be involved, maybe they shouldn't meet on the same night.
Tonight, they're gonna discuss their meeting schedule, I know that.
Oh, alright, well, then maybe I won't make anybody upset by getting upset about it, okay.
Um, so I guess those are the two questions. I know Helen has some thoughts also about expense and burden on the towns, which maybe should be.
Oh, there should be no burden on us.
Should be no burden on our part.
So Helen, did you want to speak on this issue?
I just pulled figures from the past election to give us a rough idea of what we were talking about going forward.
And that was about thirty-five hundred bucks, was that right?
Thirty-five, thirty-six.
Uh, it was a full of nine hundred and there's a few things not filled in yet.
Okay.
So.
Perhaps with a communication to the district, we ought to say that we've anticipated the expense to be approximately X.
Yep.
Are they prepared to?
To pay for that.
Reimburse the towns for that?
Yes. I get it, I, I just get a kick out of the fact they want to do a mail-in ballot.
Yes.
When they hate, we were doing a mail-in ballot and they couldn't do a mail-in ballot then.
Right, but now they want one.
I know, it does boggle the mind.
It's, it's mind-boggling, yes.
It's amazing, isn't it, David? It's just amazing.
It's such a waste of money.
Just amazing.
Oh, yes, it is, you know, and whether it would have passed or not, had they sent it out in the mail, who knows? But certainly they would have got more people voting.
That's for sure.
You know.
Um, do you have any opinion as a select board, which should be reflected in the minutes, about how you feel, whether you'd be agreeable to a mail-in ballot?
I'm not happy with the idea.
They do it the same way they did previously? What's wrong with that?
I don't, no, they, they, previously, they should have done mail because that's what Pittsburgh did.
That's what we did.
It should have been a mail-in, the same, it should have mirrored whatever the towns were doing.
So, if you want, if you want, I'll read from the email.
No, it's ridiculous.
I am writing to request the following. On the topic of ballot mailing consideration at next select board meeting, the OVUU board may wish to consider mailing the special election ballots, but can only do so with the approval of each individual town's select board. We're asking for your select boards to consider this request at their next meeting. Please, eh, please email me the minutes from those meetings so we can track approval. So I guess the question is, would you be in favor of ballot, mail by ballot, ballot by mail?
Yes, Dave.
Okay, so I, this question is for Helen. So if, if they do the mail-in ballot, well, actually, okay, let's just say they say, no, we're not paying for this, uh, election. And the town is forced to pay for it, which will be cheaper for us? To set up polls or to have mail-in?
It would be cheaper for us to just have the polls open.
But also, we, how are we, I don't feel that we would be obligated, this is on them to figure that out though.
I understand that, but if they refuse to pay and we have to have the election, what do we do?
We don't have to, we've already had our elections, this is just for the school board.
I, I understand, but if, if the school board says, no, we, you, you have, that we have to pay for it and they refuse to pay for it, what do we do?
We have the elections staff and the BCA to conduct the election. They don't have their own apparatus.
I know, they're a whole separate entity, we don't, aren't obligated to do anything.
So they can't force us to pay for, I'm just, I, and I'm not, I'm just saying.
Uh, I think maybe the first input is, um, we have, we have identified the expense for a mail-in ballot. And we are agreeable if you're willing to.
Pay for it.
Pay that cost to the towns.
Yes.
If not, our position is that you should conduct an in-person polling. But I don't know that we can, you know, as responsible people, tell them they have to run their own elections because it's always been town clerk, staff with the support of the BCA that conduct the elections. Am I not right?
Yeah, but they do the county of the ballots and everything else, that, that's kind of a.
Or we do.
No.
Not school?
Not school stuff, no, they count, yeah.
We'd never have had anything to do with that.
You bag them and send them.
But they can't man their own polls and set up their own polling stations, I don't believe.
Should have said about that a couple of weeks ago.
Each town has its own polling place.
What does she recommend or does she have any?
I mean, I guess if we don't have to pay for it.
I guess I don't understand the, each, we do our own polling place, but yet they take all the ballots and do the calculating up there, we don't even see them, it's, it's the BCA and stuff. That don't make sense to me, Helen. Why, why does that happen that way?
And they no longer commingle the ballots.
Yeah, but what authority do they have counting all the ballots?
Well, yeah, it's, it's, it would be like.
They have, they, they've given them.
The state's given them this?
In districts, um, they've approved them to have all this input into the election.
Yeah, I guess you're missing my, my point.
Oh, okay.
How can, how can they legally count all these ballots? Who, who's doing it up there? Is it school board members or just people off the street?
They've done it with the Brandon's office. Sue Gage is running all of the ballots through.
Okay, so Brandon Town Office is who's counting the ballots?
I don't think so, is it?
No, that's what she just said. Cause what, I know your question would be no different than you and I counting our own ballots in a select board election.
Exactly, that's what.
Right, but if the count of Brandon is counting them.
Okay, if it's the town doing it and not the school just themselves.
Okay, so then wouldn't, if, if they're gonna do this mail-out ballot, they're gonna be the ones mailing them out, we're not gonna be mailing them out. They're gonna get mailed what, to Brandon? So there would be no expense for us or no chance of any expense for us, correct?
If.
No.
No, I think Helen has to, because of the checklist.
So we have to do the, okay, so we have to do the checklist and we would have to mail them out?
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, no.
Or they could go, uh, they could go to a company like Brandon does and have them mailed from, have the ballots go directly there and be mailed from there.
That same company that put my seventeen-year-old son on the ballot?
That's the key.
I'm saying.
I mean, I suppose one thing we could do is ask for that, ask for the Otter Valley Board to come and speak with you.
Well, wouldn't that be nice?
But the problem is that, again, A, they conflict with our meeting schedule so far. And B, it's not until April sixth, which is three weeks from now. And I'm sure they'd want to get their.
Well, they gotta get that before. Well, it sounds to me like a mail ballot is gonna be a lot more work for us. Even if we get paid for it, it's still a lot of Helen and Liz's and Pat's time.
I'd say they'll come here.
So.
Voting like they normally do, set up the polls.
Yeah, I think, for the ease of the town, normal voting, I think.
I think so.
And should, with this response, should we let the district know that we still prefer that they pick up any of our labor and...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Like pencils.
Yeah, like pencils.
Pencils, that's a big expense.
And again, we already talked...
A lot of time and effort went into those.
We already talked about days and evenings to avoid, which would be the first and third Wednesday for their meeting.
So do you need a motion?
I don't know.
Do you need a motion?
Do we need a motion? Okay.
They just want, they just want your minutes to reflect what your position is, and maybe you wanna have it in a motion, so it's tidy.
Okay, I make a motion that for the school election, that we do it...
Australian ballot?
Australian ballot, yes, not mail.
At our polling site in Pittsburgh.
At our polling station.
At no cost to us.
At no cost to us, and I'll second the motion.
All right, any more discussion on that? It's a juicy topic.
Does the state have any input in this that we're not aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I'm aware of either.
Well, if they do, we'll hear about it.
We'll find out.
Helen, you don't have any thoughts on that, do you? The state's view?
There's nothing further than I'm aware of that the state would be involved there.
They have it all thrown back at us just for something.
Yeah, no, I know. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's unanimous.
Okay. Well, all righty then.
Thank you.
Thanks, Helen.
Thank you, Helen.
Thanks, Helen.
Thanks, Helen.
All right, old business.
We have Mr. Benham on. I believe.
All right.
Are you there, John?
I am.
All right, you're up. Good evening.
I'll just, I'll just do a little one-sentence preview, which is that at the last select board meeting, you had let us know that you were facing a March 16th deadline for a grant application to possibly fund your purchase of the Smith Wheeler parcel in Florence. Therefore, we agreed that we would try to poll selectmen on the one issue that seemed to be pending that night, which was the tax consequences of such a sale. Since then, other issues have come up, and you've had conversations with one or more selectmen. So it seemed appropriate to us all to invite you back, so we could have a full discussion of any remaining concerns transparently in the open, so please take it away.
Sure, well, I'm not really prepared to say much tonight, other than, you know, I think that, you know, between the language in your town plan and your town zoning, it appears that both of those documents favor, are in favor of this. I can review excerpts from the town plan if you'd like. And, but, you know, don't have to do that if we don't want to. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you have.
Okay, so, and I didn't get John's email with your phone number, and it wouldn't have done any good, because I don't have much time during the day. And that's why I didn't give him, or give you my number, because you just would've left a message, and, yeah. You either, you'd have been in bed one end of the day or the other. So anyway, that being said, in your letter here, you know, you talk about that the select board doesn't give this kind of scrutiny to other landowners who wanna go in current use. And I agree with that, however, we expect that all of those property owners are gonna follow the rules of current use. And in this case, and I will tell you, there's a number of people in town who have talked to me about this, and they are people who have land in current use, not myself, because I don't, these are other people. And they don't feel that it's fair, that you get the tax benefit, and then you can basically do whatever you want with the land, you aren't restricted to a forestry plan that they are. And so a lot of people don't feel that that's fair. So, you know, you feel it's not fair that we're giving you this scrutiny, but a lot of our constituents feel that it's not fair that you get your cake and get to eat it too. So, that's my issue.
Fair enough, you and they should take it up with the legislature, because the legislature created the category of current use called conservation lands, that was specifically for conservation entities like ourselves and other land trusts that wanted to enroll in current use. But not necessarily follow the silvicultural guides that are outlined for private land ownership. And you should also know, and I think I mentioned to John in my email to him, that there is a bill that is pending in the legislature that allows for private individuals to enroll their land in current use as reserve lands, and not do any timber harvest, under certain conditions. So that has passed the House, it's in the Senate now, and, you know, early indications are that it's moving forward in the process. So, I think, you know, if you and your constituents have issues, they're broader issues, that should be taken up with the legislature. Because we, as a private landowner, and as a conservation owner, as a nonprofit organization, have the right to enroll our properties in the conservation lands section of current use. And we exercise that right.
I have a question. So are you saying that the current use program then is expanding? With this new legislation of the reserve land for private ownership?
It hasn't yet, but that is the proposal. And it was, and this proposal came directly from the Department of Forests, Parks and Recreation.
How much acreage are you talking, how much acreage do you have to have?
Nine percent.
No.
For private?
You'd have to read the legislation yourself, it's H697. And I don't have it all in my head, but basically, if you have either very steep slopes, I'm thinking that it's over twenty-five percent, but don't quote me on that. And it, or if your property has over thirty percent of what they call ecologically special treatment areas, which is another subcategory under the forestry plan that people can enroll in. If you have an ecologically special natural community that has been identified by the state, then you can enroll that in current use under the ESTA program, which is ecologically special or ecologically significant treatment area, where you don't have to do forest management, or if you do wanna do forest management, you can do that too, but it allows you to not necessarily use the silvicultural guides. So if you're above thirty percent of your property is ESTA, or if you have steep slopes, then you're able to enroll the entire property as a reserve under this new bill. And like I said, it's just a bill, it's not law yet, and it may not ever be law. But it is in the legislature and it passed the House.
I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make. In the town of Pittsburgh, you people, your organization has...
Excuse me?
In the town of Pittsburgh?
Can I interrupt you for a second? You use the term "you people," and, you know, I think what that does is it makes me the other. I'm a person, I have a name, you could call me by my name. Or you can call the Nature Conservancy by your name, I appreciate that. I have respect for you and your business and everything, but I prefer that we not talk about you people, because that sets up the situation of me as the enemy. And I don't feel like I'm your enemy, I'm just, I have a different perspective than you do. Go ahead.
I'm sorry about that, and I meant no ill feelings.
Thank you.
Conservancy in the town of Pittsburgh has around twenty-one hundred acres roughly. In Brandon, they have about a hundred and sixty, in Sudbury, they have six hundred and twenty-six. In Hubbardton, they have a total of around nine hundred, a little more. So that's a total of thirty-eight hundred, thirty-nine hundred roughly. As I understand, none of that is being managed for timber purposes. It's not part of the Vermont working forest as is designated through the current use program. Now, the current use program, we're in it, I understand it some, quite a bit really. And I feel I have no problem with the people that own that land. They have managed it, and it's been part of the Vermont working forest up until now. And they have done a hell of a good job with it. They wanna sell it, you wanna buy it? The Conservancy, I believe, will take it out of the production that it has been in and change the use of it. I cannot support that only if you agree to follow the same rules and regulations that I have to follow under the current use. The current use has been set up, and it does a hell of a good job. It may not be perfect, they're making some changes, and it's still pending. And I'm gonna have to live with them, and I'm willing to live with them. But I feel as though this land is being bought with tax dollars, people's tax dollars money. That's everybody, everybody in this room is contributing. I feel as though the current use program is supported by tax dollars, everybody in this room. Therefore, that's the only way I can support the purchase of that land to the conservation organization. Otherwise, I can't support it. If they would be willing to agree to manage it under the same guidelines as I have to my land, I'm all behind you, otherwise I can't be. Thank you.
Okay, well, as I told you over the phone, we're willing to meet you halfway. We're not willing to go that full distance. There would be no reason for us to own that land if we have to manage it just like everybody else does. So the conservation gain for us is the ability to manage that land, to do forest management that we have agreed to do, based on your concerns and your, you know, we understand where you're coming from. And we're very happy to meet you halfway, but we're not willing to go that full distance. That's just the way it is, and so...
Your halfway that you mentioned, that sounds acceptable. But halfway of what? What's the half that we're going halfway on? I can't figure that out.
There will be log trucks leaving that property.
But you're not willing to...
But we're not gonna manage every acre, because what we plan on doing is we plan on doing an ecological inventory. Let me just refer to my notes here. We plan on doing an ecological inventory, starting in the spring, and based on the inventory, we will establish areas that we will treat as reserved lands with no planned timber harvest, due to the presence of rare, threatened or endangered species, or significant natural communities, or serve as riparian or wetland buffers. Once the inventory and conservation planning are complete, we will contract for a forest management plan for those portions of the property that are found to be appropriate for active forest management, consistent with our goal to manage for interior forest habitat and improve climate resiliency and carbon stocking. The forest management planning will rely on a variety of sources, including but not limited to accepted U.S. Forest Service Silvicultural Guides, Foresters for the Bird Silvicultural Options, NICS Forest Strategies for Climate Adaptation, TNC's Management Guide to Increase Dark Carbon Storage in Northeast Forests, and other references addressing managing for structural complexity enhancement while improving forest conditions, including carbon retention, coarse woody materials, snags, promoting natural water management, and adding vertical complexity to forest stands. And we can anticipate continuing this management as necessary to achieve our management goals.
So with that being said, you talk about wetlands, rare plants, water, all those things. You pretty much have to avoid those anyway. If you're, well, if you're logging on your property and you wanna sell chips to Burlington, the forester comes in and makes sure that you are away from all those things anyway. I don't have a problem with that part, okay? I don't think any of us have a problem, because that's what we expect that you would do anyway. That's what a good steward of the land does. I think where the issue is, it's that other land that these things are not on, that we're looking to have you manage it just like everybody else in current use does. I think that's... I think that's the bottom line. You know, we aren't expecting you to go into a wetland and log it, that's just wrong. And I don't think, you know, we're out of line asking this, that you, those non-rare endangered areas, you treat the areas that are not wetlands or whatever, the same as everybody, every other property owner in Pittsburgh has to. You know, we aren't saying you gotta clear cut the whole thing, so...
Right, right, I understand. I also wanna make you aware, and I think I did the last time, but I just wanna make sure you hear this, that, you know, we were involved just a couple of years ago in a conservation project in Pittsburgh that you weren't privy to, because it was a private purchase. We purchased about four hundred acres, more or less, in two parcels on Cox Mountain, over on the east side of Pittsburgh. And it just so happens, and, you know, maybe you already know this, but it just so happens that, you know, the Pittsburgh and Brandon area are a really important wildlife corridor from the Green Mountains over to the Adirondacks, and eventually into Canada. And with climate change, everything is moving north about eleven miles every five to ten years, and up in elevation, at least a hundred and fifty feet during that timeframe too. So we're very focused on maintaining a wildlife corridor, and so we bought this land. But we knew we didn't, there wasn't much on the property that would cause us to want to retain it and add it to our Sugar Hollow Preserve. So what did we do? We sold it, but we sold it with conservation restrictions that allow for forest management. So we're very aware of the town's issues and the town's concerns, and we have actually, you know, done what you wanted, want, you know, what you now want us to do, basically, by selling that land to private owners that will now manage the timber on that land. In this case, at High Pond, we have different management objectives. It's a different habitat, it's a larger habitat, as Mr. Daniel said. It's adjacent to other lands that we own up there. Size is important, wildlife habitat, it's important to have larger-sized wildlife habitat, because small islands of wildlife habitat, they just, they disappear over time. They just shed species, they get overrun by invasive species, they do not last. And so we want places that last the test of time, and so High Pond, we feel that High Pond is one of those. Now, like I said, we're willing to meet you halfway and do forest management on portions of this parcel, but not the entire parcel. And that's just the way, that's the way we are as a conservation organization. We're willing to be flexible, we're willing to meet you halfway, but we're not willing to, you know, go, to basically treat the land as if we were a normal private owner. Because we're not, we're a conservation organization. And I will just say, in your town plan, you mention numerous things. Let me just tell you a couple here. Under your economic development, on page twelve, it says, "Pittsburgh has been at the forefront of preserving many acres to be natural areas, as indicated by its upland conservation districts. Pittsburgh has many acres of woodland that is steep and unsuitable for development. To keep these acres wild, extending the zoning districts along Route Three and Route Seven for commercial application will concentrate business areas away from the more sensitive environmental areas. These acres will enhance Pittsburgh's wild beauty for decades to come." Later on, let's see. You say, "Open space under Pittsburgh-Achim Utility and Facility Plan," on page thirty-five, you say, and I believe it's, you know, all of you are on the select board, well, I could be wrong about that, but this was adopted in 2018. It says, "Open space is important if the town is a component of local planning and serves two functions. First, it protects and enhances natural resources. And secondly, it is intimately related to the economic development of the area by virtue of its appeal." to the economic development of the area by virtue of its appeal to potential landowners and visitors who view it as part of the region's character. Pittsburgh has benefited from the actions of the nature conservancy and others to preserve undeveloped land." So, I guess I would suggest that in their next town plan, if you don't agree with that, then you certainly should change that because that basically, as someone said to me today from the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, your town plan sets your policy. And if you're setting your policy to say you want to protect these areas, well, that's exactly what we're doing. We may not be doing it in exactly the way you would like us to, but we're willing to meet you halfway.
I have a question. Do you, can you cite other areas that you own where you are practicing the timber harvest?
Yes.
In Rutland County?
Not in Rutland County.
Okay.
We have a property in Caledonia County where we had a timber harvest just last winter and we used to own the, well, we still own some of the Atlas Timberlands, which was 26,000 acres that we jointly owned with the Vermont Land Trust that we managed for sustainable forestry over the last 23 years.
Okay.
But we don't manage all of our lands. And the High Pond lands are under strict conservation restrictions that are in a deed to the Vermont Wildlands Foundation. So, those deed restrictions, we cannot violate, otherwise we're subject to the Attorney General coming down on us. Similarly, at our Sugar Hollow Preserve, some of that land was donated to us by a Pittsburgh resident and the stipulation was that we not do forest management there. So, we cannot do forest management there. We do lease some of the fields there at Sugar Hollow for hay production, but we don't do forest management there because of the donor's wishes.
All right. What are we thinking? Do you have three options to support, be neutral, or oppose?
I'm kind of neutral, I'm not sure this way to go here.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I, you know, I think, what I hear from people out on the street is, you know, we've got, you've got 1,500, 2,000 acres already that are forever wild, that's, I think, I think part of people's concern is back, it wasn't too many years ago, you didn't allow hunting on your property. Your property was all posted, that High Pond property was all posted.
That's correct.
And when, and when this whole wildlife corridor stuff came through and it was in your paperwork that you'd written up how you were going to push this thing through, it said that one of your ideas was to open the land up to hunting because that would get the hunters on your side and make it easier if you get the wildlife corridor in. And I have that paperwork. So, I think a fear of a lot of people in town is that once you get all this land and whatever, you, once you get what you want, you're going to shut it all down again. And so, that, you know, and yes, I was on the planning commission when that was written and yes, a lot of your land, we do agree that you've done good with it and that's fine. And at that time, you would change and you were letting people on it. But there comes a point when, you know, how much land is enough? I think that's people's question. You know, how much, how much more do you want? You know, you buy, how much more do you want to get? So, you own three quarters of the town. I think that's people's, that's a concern of people.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know...
But we allow, we allow people on our land, we allow people to hunt on our land.
Right now, you do.
We actually went to probate court, we went to probate court actually to change those restrictions on that land. We can't just do it ourselves, we can't change those restrictions on the High Pond lands ourselves. We had to go to the probate court and we had to petition for the probate judge to allow us to change those restrictions. And we had to have a good reason to do that. And the reason was, the deer population was very robust, we'll say, and they were having an impact on regeneration there and that was our, that was our reasoning. So, this notion that we were trying to get hunters on our side so we could push through a corridor, we, you know, we only work with willing landowners and we want to work cooperatively with people and with towns to do our conservation work. We don't, we don't want to do things, you know, underhandedly because, you know, for the very reason that, you know, suspicion is what, you know, really has a big negative impact on what, on what our goals and objectives are.
Well, sir, that isn't a notion, as you have just said. I have that document where it clearly states in it that that is, if things don't go as you planned, you would do that. So, don't tell me that it's a notion. Maybe it was before your time.
Well, I'd love to see that document.
Okay.
I can tell you that I have never seen anything like that and if anybody were to write that from our office, they'd probably be fired immediately. We have, we have values in our organization and one of our values is, our chief value is integrity beyond reproach. And if anybody ever penned anything like that from our organization, they would be immediately terminated. Immediately.
All right, so, what's everyone thinking?
Take a vote.
Do we have a motion?
What he's looking for, that may have changed based on...
Oh, I assumed it still was looking for...
Are you still looking for some sort of indication of the select board's position on this? I don't know how your meeting went today.
I am, I am, yes. The Vermont Housing and Conservation Board is interested in hearing the town's, the select board's opinion of the project.
I have no opinion, my opinion. At this point, I was willing to have no opinion if they were willing to, if the nature, excuse me, the nature conservancy was willing to allow normal logging on certain areas of the land. I realize you've got your special areas, I don't expect you to log in there. I understand that. But the basic areas of that land that are no different than anybody else's land and there's no restrictions on, and that even, I'm even at the point where I would allow you to say that, well, this chunk, you know, this is why we can't do this. That's fine, but you're not willing to go that way. So, I, at this point, I have to say I'm opposed.
Okay.
I don't understand that because I thought that's what I did say, we were willing to do.
No, it wasn't. You talked about the wetlands, the rare plants, the water and whatever, that you weren't doing anything there, but the other land, the normal land, you still wanted to log your way, not the way everybody else in current use has to.
Oh, I see.
Are you willing to change to say those...
I see, I understand, I understand what you're saying now.
So, if, again, I will, I will change that if you're willing to say...
No, I understand. Yeah, but I understand what you're saying. And no, we're not willing to enroll in forest for current use. We want to enroll in conservation lands and do forest management, but do it in a slightly different way.
But is there, okay, let me throw this out and I don't know how that land lays, but you're going to buy it so it's going to get absorbed, if you buy it, it gets absorbed with the High Pond, okay?
Yep.
So, is there a way for you to map out those areas where you don't want to do anything and have them be part of that High Pond land, keep those other sections separate so that they are logged the same way everybody else has to? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand what you're saying and, and the answer to that, I'm afraid, is no. We don't necessarily want, I mean, we, we understand where you're getting, what you're getting at and, you know, and all I can say is, you know, we will do forest management there and there will be log trucks coming off of that property, full log trucks, coming off that property. I can't tell you where because we haven't done the ecological inventory and, you know, I know that there, the areas that we've identified thus far are not huge, but I can't, you know, I can't say how much of, how much of the area we would log.
It seems to me as long as this land is being purchased with tax dollars...
Oh, yeah.
It should be handled, managed conservatively, reasonably, but it shouldn't be managed just like everybody else's land. And that's the only way I can be in favor of it.
I think we all agree on that.
Yeah, so, so, getting back to those tax dollars, you know, yes, it is tax dollars, but it's not, it's not tax dollars necessarily from all of us unless you have been in, if you have purchased land or a house recently, you have paid a property transfer tax. And so, the property transfer tax is where this money comes from for the Vermont Housing and Conservation Board and it, by statute, there's a certain percentage that goes to the Housing and Conservation Board for affordable housing projects and land conservation projects. And they conserve farmland and farms and natural areas and also do affordable housing projects. They also do preservation, like historic preservation projects as well. And maybe you've done, maybe you've had one hundred more of those in the town of Pittsburgh. So, yeah, so it's not just general tax dollars from each one of us paying, you know, our income taxes or real estate taxes or whatever, it's taxes on property transfers.
I have to say that I'm a taxpayer, I own property and the way I look at current use is that every taxpayer is subsidizing current use.
Yep.
That's the way I look at it.
That's correct. That is correct.
Yeah.
But for that privilege and that help, we are compelled to do this, 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 and this, follow a forest management plan which has to be renewed, updated every 10 years. If you fail to do anything, and I've had some experience with a landlord that failed to follow his forest plan and he got dropped from the current use program. He wanted me to log his land and I said to him, I said, "I've got to talk with the county forester to see that it's not going to get you in trouble," even though he had been dropped. And I talked with our, he's retired now, our county forester, and he said to me, he says, "What do you want to do?" He said, "If I had gone up there and heavy cut it, his property, it would have made him a liability because he had been in the plan, he had had the benefits of that plan, dropped out and then abused it."
Yeah.
I wouldn't do that. But as it was, there was an ash disease up there, the county forester went up and looked at it with me, says, "You cut every ash you can use because they need to be, the rest of the timber, we selectively cut it." The people that were logging it for me were good, conscious people, we didn't have to even have a forester market. We discussed what we would cut and what we wouldn't and everything went fine, the landlord wasn't penalized as he might have been had it been improperly cut. And he never did get back into the program, but that's a case of where somebody failed to follow the plan and he had to go back to paying the full rate. That don't happen very often.
Okay.
The current use program in the past, there has been years that it wasn't fully funded and there were opportunities for landowners to get out of it. And there was two big landowners, I won't mention their name, but owned thousands of acres right here, Rutland business people, that opted to get out of it because they wanted to sell their land and without them, without that plan being enforced, they could get a higher price for it. And that's just what they did. Said, "Hey, if you want to sell your land and you're in the current use program, you will be penalized." The break even point, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's about eight years. What you save from the state's help, in eight years, it's a wash. If you're going to stay in longer, you're gaining much more. If you pull out, it's a wash.
Okay.
That's, and you probably know more about it than I do.
Well, just, yeah, from the lister, that's how I learned it, being a lister.
But I think I'm somewhere near on track with that.
All right, I think we've gotten all the information we needed and I think we all know where we're at. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Unless this is a document in there to preserve the current use plan regulations, unless that's part of it, we don't approve it. That's my motion.
Though he did point out that he, they are working under current use rules that do apply to them.
Follow the current use program.
That everyone else has to.
That I have to follow and then all the other taxpayers in town that are in that, it should follow the same pattern.
You got that, Kelly? That was a lengthy one.
Nope, no, it's clarified now.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Yep.
Okay.
You sit there and call me? Is that...
Be careful.
I know.
And you're on peg.
Be careful.
I know. Update on transition for new town manager.
Yes.
Excuse me.
The two week transition period will begin on April 18th and will last till the 29th. The, there are three memos that I put together for the new town manager, a basic orientation regarding pending activities, a list of resources to review and use, that means people, organizations that will be of assistance to her as she has issues come up from time to time, and a kind of a weekly slash yearly calendar of recurring events. I will also provide her with kind of an updated ARPA list of potential expenditures along with the backup in terms of prices for various projects that we've been able to identify. In terms of introductions during this two weeks, Brenda, of course, will begin on the 18th, Monday. She will attend a Water and Sewer Commission meeting with me on the 19th, the select board meeting with me on the 20th, at which will also be introduced to Heather Simons, the new Police Academy Executive Director. On the 21st, Brenda will attend a staff meeting with me and on that Friday of that week, I'll introduce her to our colleagues at one of our monthly town manager lunch gatherings. The following week, she will meet with Butch and Stephanie Jerome on Monday. On Tuesday, she'll visit with Otter Creek Engineering that has several water and sewer related projects pending. We will visit the Pittsburgh Village Farm folks at 10 o'clock. At 11 o'clock, we have a sidewalk... At 11 o'clock, we have a sidewalk scoping study. At noon, we will go to Almia for lunch and a tour.
She's going to run screaming.
On Wednesday, on the 27th, we'll meet with Lyle Jepson of Cedar. And on the 28th, we meet with Deb Alexander at the school, and we have a Transportation Advisory Committee meeting that night. And we're still waiting to hear from the library about when they'd like to meet. And so we'll coordinate that as well.
Busy.
So it should be a fun kind of, a fun-filled couple of weeks.
We're a land tour of Pittsburgh.
Yes, yes.
And Rutland County.
I know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Environings.
Cool.
Okay. You, do you have a, a list of recurring events, like?
I do, and I'm going to give you those three memos so you know exactly what I've given her as kind of a game plan of things.
I'm just, I'm going to a meeting tomorrow with a bunch of people. We're trying to kind of get like a community calendar going on so that there's no overlap.
I can, I can meet up to you tonight or tomorrow morning.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
Um, let's see. And then the purchase of the arm mower.
Uh, yeah, just a brief update. Wes Rutland seems to be interested in exploring this further. I had sent the email out to several town managers in the area. Then it occurred to me I should probably talk to Rutland Town, so I've emailed Brian, or Byron Hathaway about it. I hope to hear from him, but it would be great to get three towns in on a potential purchase.
And he retired.
Oh, well, then I'll, I'll get ahold of.
That email probably will go nowhere.
I'll get ahold of a successor. Thank you for that.
Maybe he'll forward it to the next.
Yes, I will. Thank you. That's helpful.
There was some hard feelings down there.
Yeah, I don't know.
What a drama with a bunch of Hathaways and the other people in town.
But he's got to be, he's, yeah, he's got to be in his, pushing late 60s. I mean, he's retirement age, so he's quite a bit older than I am.
All right, and then, consider modification of town's COVID mask guidance. Is that we?
In August, the board recommended, based on CDC input, that we recommend the use of masks indoors at town, at town buildings, even with, regardless of vaccine status because of the surges that we've experienced. Numbers are cratering. And while we see anxious and troubling signs back in Europe again, it looks very good here for the moment. So if you wanted to amend your guidance to withdraw the mask recommendation, I'd be happy to comply.
Yep.
Hold the signs down.
Full of signs, yeah, I would just say full of signs.
Great.
Yes, we had a week, this whole week without, three days without masks.
I know, my kids love it.
It's like, who are all you people in my class, you know?
What can I do?
Exactly, yeah.
It's official. Thank you for that.
All right.
All right, and then, police cruiser. And the issues there, they're in.
I'm going to the strike board right now, though. Okay, as you know, back in 2021, we tried to order a Dodge Durango. And they told us they weren't going to build it. Last Thursday, they, they, I, they picked up the, the build order, Dodge, Chrysler did. Last Thursday, I got a call from the Dennis Johnson from Holland Dodge.
This is on the pickup?
This is, yeah, now they're not going to build the pickup. So I said, "Okay, what do I do here?" He called me back Friday afternoon, I don't know, 1:00, 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock. He found me a Dodge Durango, 2022 Dodge Durango in Niagara Falls, New York. He says, "If you want it, you got to take, you got to take, grab, jump it right now." John wasn't here. I did call Alicia, I did call Dave. I told him we would take it. It's going to be back to the original price of the Dodge Durango when we first started this. So I wanted to bring that to the board and let you know.
So that's higher.
No.
It's higher than the pickup.
The pickup was going to be $1,000 or less, I think.
So, but the same price as what we'd agreed to initially.
So I did before, I, I didn't want you guys and girls to think that I was stepping over when I told him to grab it. I tried to make some phone calls to get approval, but I couldn't get ahold of, and then one right after the other, they called me back. So, anyway, I wanted to bring that to the board and let you know. And it should be here in three weeks.
All right.
And for the record, when he called, I said, "Go ahead, if it's the same price as it was before, because we've got to get something." So I just want that on the record, that that's what I told you.
Yes.
It might serve your purpose a little bit better to, or not.
It's what I really wanted to, to be honest with you, over another pickup truck, but we were kind of, I was even thinking between Thursday and Friday that I was going to have to take a truck off the lot, and we were going to have to make it work, because I didn't know what we were going, how we were going to get anything.
So this one is set up, so.
It's a, it's a special services vehicle, just like the one we have. And I've been going around getting prices, and I talked to DJ Keith today about decal on it. And, and I've talked to people about installing the stuff. I've been talking to people about everything. But I didn't want to go crazy because I didn't know what vehicle we were going to have.
Yeah.
Kind of fits the bill.
Yes.
That's good.
And it's black. I mean, I was willing to take a red one at this point. It, it is black, so that's, that's even better. So that's what I have there.
That sounds all right.
The only one making cruisers, what, probably Ford?
Yeah, and, and Tommy, they're having so much trouble with them. They're having so much trouble with them. Transmissions and, they're just having, and so. Oh, I'm sure they're going to re- or do some, but it probably won't be to our likings, but.
It'll be electric.
Or a V6.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so, because they got.
It'll be a combination battery with V6 or some stupid.
Stupid is a good word. Anyway, I, I just wanted to come to the board, and I had to come here for something else tonight, and.
It's just like you have to regen fire trucks. A pumper, you're going to a scene all of a sudden, it shuts down because all of a sudden says, "Oh, we got to regen." I mean, that makes sense?
Uh, no, that's why.
That's a government regulation.
Well, no, and that's why I'm against us buying this new mower tractor. I mean, if we need a mower, that's fine, but keep your old tractor because you're just asking for problems buying a new one. Yeah, it's not nice and shiny, but it serves a purpose, and we can get it fixed without hiring someone with a computer to plug into it.
Yeah.
We don't put the hours on it to warrant buying a big expensive new one, that's.
True.
All right, that about wraps up that part. Oh, do you have something?
We have a liquor board matter.
Well, no, I was going to reset, recess.
Recession to the liquor board.
And open up as a liquor board.
Perhaps we got to start with the Kamutas.
Yeah.
Second-class liquor license renewal permit.
Mm-hmm.
We've got, we've got a permit. How would you like?
I make a motion to approve.
Approve is, yeah, there's never any problem there.
No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And you said that's second class?
Yes. Sugarwood Investments, DBA Kamutas Market.
In which we do need to go into an executive.
Yeah, we have had a pending application, which I think we ought to discuss.
Do an executive session.
Okay, yep.
Oh, there weren't two Kamutas?
Bye.
Bye now. Oh, okay, oh, so Sugarwood's the Kamutas.
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right, all right, okay.
I'm not going anywhere with my keys.
No, you sure.
You better, you better take your keys.
Well, yeah. Now, you were leaving a car for us. We were just going to have to fight over it to see who took it home.
So here is the Kamutas application, which we will sign on the left-hand side.
Right?
Right.
Left side.
Left, right?
As approved.
Yeah, that left.
The other left.
Your other right.
Yeah, your other left.
I need guidance.
You're, you're right there. Follow that green.
All the green arrow, though.
Yeah. All the bouncing ball.
We got to go into an executive session for this other one?
Yes.
Yes.
Certain things I don't, I prefer not be said in public.
Well, times.
Well. That's what it's there for.
That's what's worse.
Right. All right, so now we will have to.
We need to go into an executive session.
All right.
Under, under the liquor board.
Yep, that's right.
Make that a motion.
Okay.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.